Hello, video. And I have my camera off because that is what I wanted to do this morning. Okay, so I've got about four topics. Oxo acids and carboxylic acids, binary acids, an equation with the quadratic and equations with acids and bases. So what I'm actually going to do is I'm going to do this in kind of what might be a strange order. But I have reasoning and rationale behind it. So I'm going to do oxo acids first, because that's what was requested. Then we're going to go ahead and hop over to equations with acids and bases. Then I'm going to hop back to binary acids. I'm going to do that because I need a divide. I need a division between oxo acids and binary acids. I know I'm the one that insisted on also doing binary acids. But those two are two different topics, and that needs to be really obvious. And then last, I'm going to do the quadratic, because that's going to be a heck of a lot of algebra. So that's going to be the best place for y'all to pause, skip, rewind, etc. So without further ado, oxo acids. So what might be relatively straightforward is since they're called oxo acids. They, these are in fact acids. Sorry, this was my prep from yesterday, but I'm going to erase this and start off with a clean slate. So I can hop back and forth to my questions. So when we say oxo acids, these are in fact acids with oxygen. So that is absolutely what that means. So that does mean things like nitric acid. So this is a H for a hydrogen, a nitrogen, and some oxygens. So when we say acids, it's got to have a proton. So proton necessary for it to be an acid. And then when we say with oxygen, that's going to be in addition to technically, we refer to this as a hetero atom. I know that's a really fancy word that basically all that means is other or different. But that's why you have a nitrogen in there. So oxo acids are always going to have a hydrogen, some oxygens, and some other elements. So always three different elements in an oxo acid. A hydrogen for the acid, oxygens for the oxo part, and something else. In this case, this is a nitrogen. When we deal with oxo acids, there are three different ways to talk about what is a stronger acid. But first, let's actually talk about a little bit of the mechanics behind when we say a stronger acid. What are we trying to say? So realize and remember that when we say a stronger acid, what I mean is I mean acids that give you more protons. So the more, more of this, more proton I get, the stronger the acid. So the more proton I get, the stronger the acid. That one is important to remember because when you start to look at what these acids look like, they, and I'm going to kind of ignore most Lewis structury things. So this does not have the right number of lone pairs or anything like that. But in any of your acids, any of your oxo acids, you're always going to have a hydrogen attached to the oxygen. So this is also a thing that happens in all of your oxo acids. So that hydrogen's never attached to the central atom ever. That hydrogen is always attached to one of your oxygens, always, promise. So what we're really asking is how, how well, how easy can we break this bond, right? So the stronger the acids, you also have to have an easier bond to break. So the stronger the acid, the more, the better able that structure is to let go of the hydrogen. Because the proton, the hydrogen being in solution is what we're measuring when we say it's a stronger acid. So it's got to be able to let go of that. The better it hangs on, the worse it is at this. The better it is to let go, the stronger the acid. So with that in mind, anything that's going to allow more of the electron density to hang out closer to this central atom and away from the hydrogen will give us a stronger acid. What I mean by that is I'm going to compare this to something with only two oxygens. So there's electron density all in this thing, all in this acid. And there's some electron density hanging out in this bond. But when we compare it to say nitrous acid, this nitrous acid down below, so up here is nitric acid. This down here is nitrous acid. Down below, this only has two oxygens. Oxygens are pretty electronegative. So this bond below is going to have more electron density, which is going to be a stronger bond, which is going to be a weaker acid. Because essentially, this is not letting go of the proton. It's hanging on to the proton. So the better that the molecule is at sharing its electron density, the more you're going to have that hydrogen stay attached. The more the hydrogen stays attached, the weaker the acid. So the way that this usually looks is we wind up with something like HNO2, which is called a weak acid, is a weaker acid than HNO3. What we then usually say is we usually just say more oxygens, stronger acid. And that bottom line, more oxygens, stronger acid, is the part we're going to test you on. I'll be real honest. The rest of it is nice to know because that is how it works. For those of y'all moving on to organic chemistry, the rest of it is really what you actually need to know because you're going to be using that for organic. But if we're down to that, like, the exam is coming, what do I need to know? More oxygens, stronger acid. Yeah, does have to do with electronegativity. But for this, for this one, that's what we're looking at. Since this is also an electronegativity game essentially, the other thing that we can look at is electronegativity. In this case, I'm just going to look at this one greater than this one. More electronegative element, stronger the acid. That's supposed to be the word acid. Great. And this is the same general idea, so. Do those really have the, yeah, I think they do. So again, the one that has the more, the greater electronegativity is basically going to keep more of that electron density over towards itself and away from the poor little hydrogen. The one that is better at sharing and therefore has a lower electronegativity is going to have a stronger bond, weaker acid. Quick refresh on electronegativity. Where is the thing I want? There's my periodic table. I knew I was going to want this at some point. So quick refresh on electronegativity. That basically is the one where we more or less point to fluorine. So in electronegativity, we basically go ahead and highlight fluorine as being the most electronegative. Most electro negative. And then we basically just kind of draw like an arrow and we're like more electronegative that way. So that's why we use things like chlorine and bromine, or we'd use things like oxygen and sulfur. So the closer you get to fluorine, the more electronegative the element is. So the closer you are to fluorine, more electronegative it is. You might notice me ignoring the noble gases. But the noble gases are also not going to form acids. So you'll see us ignore those for a variety of reasons. But the closer you are to fluorine, more electronegative. And oxygen, oxygen is more electronegative than chlorine, also true. Okay, so we've talked about more oxygens, the stronger the acid, more electronegative element, the stronger the acid. What I am going to do real quick is I'm going to double check my notes. That's my Lashat Liaz notes. Where's my acid notes? Acid notes. Oh no, that's okay, oxo acids, same number. So we just did same number of oxygens, different elements. We did that one. We'll do carbocilic acids in a minute. Same middle atom, different number of oxygens. More oxygens, stronger the acids, which we have to talk about when they both change. So carbocilic acids have this particular structure. So a carbocilic acid is just a specific kind of acid. It is very common. But basically, you're just going to use the same idea as what we just talked about. So if this is my structure, we would basically be comparing this carbocilic acid versus this carbocilic acid. Look at how all of that part is the same, but I am going to put in red the part that's different. Look at my bromine. And now we actually have the exact same setup that we had previously, where I have the exact same structure, except I've exchanged chlorine for bromine. That was the exact same thing that we had up here. Same acid, we just exchanged chlorine for bromine. And when we do that, we are going to be faced with the same answer, which is that the more electronegative the element, the stronger the acid. So as I look down here at carbocilic acids, I'm still looking at the more electronegative the element, the stronger the acid. Which means this one's stronger, stronger. So carbocilic acids, you basically do treat them the same way you treat the same number of oxygens. Which is that if that's the only thing that's happening, then that's what we deal with. One of the other things that I was doing along the way but had forgotten about was this idea of lone oxygens. So when we say lone oxygens changing, I mean these oxygens with no hydrogens attached. So the last one in oxo acids is to take a look, and I am just going to steal the example from the notes. Because that way I don't have to try to imagine something different. So here's what's going on. So the last thing in oxo acids, and this is all oxo acids. The last thing in oxo acids is to talk about, well, what happens if we are changing multiple things? So in this case, I have H2SO4 and I have H3PO4. And this is the part where the lone oxygens come in handy. Because these things I'm highlighting in pink are the lone oxygens. Lone oxygens. So it is not just the number of oxygens that matter, it's the number of lone oxygens that matter. The ones that don't have a hydrogen attached to them. So how many oxygens do you have where there's no other hydrogens attached? So the hard thing is to compare these two. Now we've got everything changing. So I've got a different central atom in there. And I have a different number of lone oxygens, one with two and one with only one. So in order to think about this, what we are going to basically do is we are going to look at the conjugate base. So here on the right are my acids. There's my acid. There's my acid. And then what we are going to take a look at is we are going to compare conjugate bases. So what we actually have now is everything, these two ions now have a negative charge. And we are basically going to divide that negative charge between all of the lone oxygens. So for those of you that might remember this, this is basically taking a look at resonance. It's really kind of what we're thinking through, but we're not going to go all the way back for that right now. So basically, I have a negative in my, in my sulfur compound, I have a negative one being stretched out over three oxygens. So therefore, I expect that to be a negative one-third, and that to be a negative one-third, and that to be a negative one-third. And then in the phosphorus down below, I'm stretching that out over two. So this is negative one-half, and this is negative one-half. Now, now that I've done that, so I've taken my one negative one charge and stretched it out over all of the lone oxygens. What I need to consider is, I know this is drawn as a single arrow, but this is also an equilibrium game. So I should actually have arrows going back the other way. What I really need to ask myself now is this kind of odd question, which is how well does the conjugate base attract my H+? And basically, what's going to happen then is I've got these negative one-half versus negative one-third. So when you think about negative one-third plus something positive versus negative one-half plus an H+, the negative one-half is a greater negative charge. So I expect then my greater negative charge to go back the way it came. So I expect this phosphorus compound down below to basically attract, nab, keep a proton in solution and stay over here. So my phosphorus compound is going to have more of this with the proton attached and less of this one with the proton not attached because of the negative one-half versus the negative one-third. Similarly, in my sulfur compound, I expect my sulfur compound to have more of my H+ and less of the one here on the left where it's attached. So because of this analysis, because of this analysis, what we basically then said is I'm looking at which one do I expect to be the stronger acid? The one that's a stronger acid is the one that's going to give me more H+ in solution. We just said that that's the sulfur compound. So this analysis does take more time. It is a longer process. It is more stuff to think through. So just be mindful that that one is longer. We are also aware of that. So just be mindful of that one, but you can still do it. So number of lone oxygens and the middle atom changing at the same time is something to watch out for. And really, you would mostly know that with the lone oxygens by how many hydrogens are still attached. So the, if you have a different number of hydrogens on here in comparison, then that's also going to be a different number of lone oxygens. Because your hydrogens are going to be attached to your oxygens. Okay. That shook me about 18 minutes. Whoops, too far, too far. That's oxo acids. This is the reason why, it was like yesterday, I was like, I can't do it all in one day. Yeah, so that was oxo acids. Now to equations with acids and bases. So I am going to grab, I really wanted the, this, this is all I wanted. I wanted my equations with acids and bases. This is what I want. Oh, sorry. That was me being not quite fast enough to nab it. There it is. Okay, so equations, classes, and basis, this is what I'm looking at. So here's, here's the beautiful game with acids and bases and equations. We can just do something as simple as what is the pH when hydronium is equal to 0.01 molar? We can do that. If we do that, then we are plugging into that initial pH equation, negative log, and plugging in. I did go ahead and do that a little bit of switcheroo where I have H3O+ versus H+. But those two are the same thing, like it or not, those are the same thing. And I just get a pH of two, and we go on down the road. But we can also do other things. For example, we can go ahead and ask, what is the pH of a 0.005 molar barium hydroxide solution? So now I've got a couple of different things going on. One, I have a strong base, but I have a die basic base. So what I mean by that is, when I look at this base, I've got barium plus two hydroxides. I have twice as much hydroxide. So that 0.005 molar isn't real. It's true of the barium, but I basically have twice as much of it. So for every one barium hydroxide, I have two hydroxides. So if I want to talk about hydroxide concentration, I need to actually multiply correctly. So if I want to talk about hydroxide concentration, it's this 0.01 molar, it's twice as much. So that's now my concentration of that. If I wanted to get to pH, I now have a lot of choices. And this is part of the reason why I did this problem. So let's do it, there's two different ways to get here. And this will actually showcase most of the rest of our equations, or I think the rest of the equations. So one way is to say, well, I want pH, but I have hydroxide. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to solve for POH. And POH is the negative log of my hydroxide concentration. And so there's my POH. And then I can go ahead and use PKW is equal to pH plus POH. The problem didn't say, so I'm going to assume we're at 25 degrees Celsius, which means I get to assume that PKW is equal to 14. So then I get 14 is equal to pH, the thing I wanted, plus two, the thing I solved for, pH is equal to 12. But that's not the only way I could do it. But this is one way. This is actually personally my preferred way, because I usually think that this is faster to deal with the 14 than the other way, but the other way works just fine. And this is going to be a case where whichever way is faster, whichever way you remember first, is faster. Because it's going to be about the same number of lines of information. So here's my 0.01 hydroxide. I'm going to go ahead and say that I want to, but I don't want hydroxide, I want proton concentration. Well, I know that KW is equal to proton concentration times hydroxide. By the way, looking at our equations, I calculated POH and I've used PKW so far. So this is the other one I haven't used yet, this little thing on the left, so that's what I'm using. So again, we're going to assume 25 degrees Celsius. When we assume 25 degrees Celsius, I know that KW is 1 times 10 to the negative 14th. So I have 1 times 10 to the negative 14th is equal to my proton concentration times 0.01. So now I'm going to solve, and I get 1 times 10 to the negative 12th is equal to my proton concentration. And now I can solve for pH. Negative log of 1 times 10 to the negative 12th, I get that my pH is equal to 12. So I got the exact same answer. You should, while these equations are in fact all related to each other, so it doesn't matter which way you do it. Either way will work. We could have asked you to solve for the proton concentration, given the hydroxide concentration, in which case then you have to use this formula. So you do need to know all four of these formulas and how they work together. But that, that is those in a nutshell. I guess I could have done these with your review yesterday. But I didn't, I thought I needed more time. Apparently not. I guess I just needed two different, two different problems and then we're done. So I use this one, I use this one. The one other thing I'll mention over here with this KW equation is for pure water, for pure water, but pure water alone, your H+ is equal to your hydroxide concentration. Now that you can actually get from the definition of KW, because basically you are looking at the fact that if all you have is water, then all of your hydroxide and all of your protons are coming from water. And they're not being influenced by any other acids or bases. So when you have pure water, then those two things are equal to each other. And that one's not given mostly because that's really a concept that y'all should be, that y'all are responsible for. So it's not really an equation for you to memorize, that is a concept for you to understand. Because you could derive it from an ice table. Because I could tell you that we have pure water and nothing else. So I would start off with none of these, and then I would get some. And what I would get is I would get equal amounts of hydroxide and hydronium. Where did the questions go? There they are. Okay, so we did oxo acids. We did equations with acids and bases. Now it's time for binary acids. So I know it may seem silly to separate the acids like that. But basically, binary acids are different. Binary acids. These are acids that have a proton, because it's an acid, plus one other element. Now, the weird thing here is, so I can talk about things like HF being an acid, and that's all well and good. But I can also talk about water as being an acid. Because when I look at the periodic table, what I'm talking about is any other element, and then I just need to have enough enough hydrogens to make that compound be neutral. So this is my sulfur compound, it's in group 6A. If I'm going to add enough hydrogens to make that neutral, I need H2S. So what I could do is I could compare things across a row. So I can go across a row here, and I could do H2S versus HCl. So as I do H2S versus HCl, here what I'm going to rely on is electronegativity. As I look at electronegativity, as electronegativity increases across a row, that's going to give that weaker bond, so I'm going to have a stronger acid across the row. So as you go across, you get a stronger acid. Now, HCl is also a strong acid. So when I said H2S and HCl, for anybody that was like, I thought HCl was just a strong acid, and everything else is a weak acid, that's not on my strong acid list. Yes, that's true. You can absolutely just use, hey, I memorized this is a strong acid, we're good to go, works great. But the other thing, so we can go, so if we can go across, that also means we can go up and down. So the short answer is going down is also going to get you a stronger acid. Now, part of this hopefully actually makes sense, because when you look at HF versus HCl versus HBR versus HI, HF is a weak acid. HF is a weak acid. HF is not, hydrofluoric acid is not on your strong acid list. It never has been, because it's not. HF is not a strong acid. It will take a brief moment just to say that HF is deadly to humans. So if you're ever watching some sort of social media post and it's talking about HF, and it's talking about how dangerous it is, that's true. But HF is toxic to humans. It's poisonous to humans. HF is dangerous to humans, but not because of its acid strength. HF is dangerous because of its toxicity to living things. HCl, HBR, HI are all strong acids. And these will just eat through metal or your skin, you know, stuff like that. But they won't necessarily kill you. HF will do bad things. So you know, just keep that in mind if you're look, if you're on the internet. HF is bad, but because it's, but not because of its acid strength. Different things. So, so as we go down, down the call, down the column, you get stronger acids. So out of this set, HI is actually the strongest acid. And yes, we can say that even though it's a strong acid. We can rank those. Now, the reason for this is actually due to size. So when I think about the size of my elements, one of the things that's going to happen here is this bond is going to get weaker because my fluorine hanging out in group 2A only has two energy levels. And then my hydrogen can start. Chlorine has three. Bromine has four. So as my elements get larger, that hydrogen has to be farther and farther away from the nucleus. One, two, three, four, five. And I'll put a little poor little hydrogen way out here. And as it gets farther and farther away from the nucleus, that covalent bond gets weaker. And as we said before, a weaker covalent bond to the hydrogen will get you a stronger acid. So this is the reason why I did want to talk about binary acids, but separated from oxo acids. Because binary acids act two different ways depending on what you're looking at. As you go across the row from left to right, they do get stronger. But as you go down the column, they also get stronger. So you cannot use electronegativity periods for binary acids. You can use electronegativity as you go across for binary acids. But hydroiodic acids, that iodine is less electronegative than fluorine. But HI, hydroiodic acid, is stronger than hydrofluoric acid. So just keep that in mind that these arrows stronger across and stronger down is what you need for binary acids where there is no oxygen. Or more correctly, where there is only hydrogen and one other element. Because you can evaluate water, H2O, as an acid. Okay. That's binary acids. Binary acids, check mark. Last but not least, an equation with the quadratic. I saved it for last because I thought we would just go ahead. And if I'm going to do a heck of a lot of algebra, then we're just going to do a heck of a lot of algebra. So I will make this bigger in just a minute. And yeah, I did not actually do this in advance. Whoopsies. So I did, I should say, I did work this out in advance. I just didn't type this in advance. Because I also thought that we would also look at another version of that, what to do when you're not given, when you're not get, when, when you have to figure out which way the direction, which, which direction the reaction is going. Take eleven concentration of, we'll just do A. Okay, so I'm going to make this bigger and give you guys the lovely equation. Because here we go. So I have initial concentrations, which honestly, you could assume just because you're not explicitly told that these are equilibrium concentrations. And these are all molarity, which means we're going to assume that these are all aqueous. And my K value, which also is given in the problem, is 5,000. Because I picked a random number. I don't know if you've noticed, but I have a tendency to pick really round numbers on my own. So I have a K value, a KC value of 5,000. I have a chemical reaction and I have initial concentrations for all three of these. And I want to know what the equilibrium concentration is of A. So what we're going to do is start on our ice table. So I have, and this is a great question, by the way, to just like pause and see, pause the video and see how far you can get and then double check against where I am. So initially, I have 0.1. I have 0.1 and I have 0.2. Because of my stoichiometry, this is, should be 2X, this should be X, and this should be X. But I don't actually know what's positive or negative yet. So what I need to do is I need to take a moment and calculate QC. So Q is going to be still the concentration of C times the concentration of D divided by the concentration of A squared. That's still happening. So it's got the same expression as K. But now it's going to be 0.1 times 0.2, all divided by 0.1 squared, which means for QC, I have to recalculate because I did this earlier, but I don't think I wrote it down. Two, it's good two. So when I look at K versus Q, my Q value is two, my K value is 5,000. That means that my 5,000 is greater than two. So this is going to go to products. So I do get to put positive signs in here. And I do get to put negative signs over there. So I am in fact still going to go to the right because of the difference in K versus Q. But calculating Q is how I know that. You might have also intuited that since K is large, that you need a large number of products for this to work. And these products and reactants are kind of similar to each other. So you might have also done it that way. But calculate Q. It's still a calc, it's still a K versus Q calculation. So this is now 0.1 minus 2X. This is 0.1 plus X. This is 0.2 plus X. Okey dokey. Now, we're going to go ahead and set up our K expression. So K, which is equal to 5,000, is equal to the concentration of C, which is 0.1 plus X, times the concentration of D, 0.2 plus X, all divided by the concentration of A squared, 0.1 minus 2X squared. So K is too big for me to use the approximation method. It won't work. And this is not a perfect square because I have 0.1 and I have 0.2. So I can't use a perfect square and I can't use the approximation method. So that's going to leave me with a quadratic. Kind of wish I'd given myself an easier quadratic, but that's okay. Mistakes were made. So basically, this is going to be the algebra part. Because where I'm headed is to use the quadratic equation, I need to be able to use X is equal to negative B plus or minus the square root of B squared minus 4AC, all divided by 2A. So this is, this is what I'm looking at. I never learned the song that goes with it. So if you were hoping I was going to sing, I unfortunately, they did not teach me a song for this. They just made me memorize it when I was in high school? Whatever. So there's my quadratic equation. So I need, so in order to do this, this is based on 0 being equal to A times X squared plus B times X plus C. So all of my ABCs are going to come from this. So I need this, 5,000 is equal to all of these Xs to be in this format of 0 is equal to that. So there got some algebra in front of me. So one of the things I need to do is foil. So foil stands for first. So I'm going to take my 0.1 times my 0.2, which will get me 0.02. Outsides, which is going to be my 0.1 times X. Insides, we'll go ahead and do that in green, but we'll do that with a dashed line. Insides, 0.2X plus, last one is lasts. So that's going to be the things that were last in there. So that's X times X, which gives me X squared. So that's foiling. And you do the same thing to the bottom. By the way, this is the part where I really hope I did all of this algebra correctly. Because I did double check myself. I just hope it was right. It was not because this is supposed to be 0.2X. Gosh darn it. It's not just 2X, it's negative 0.2X because it's 0.1 times 2. God, I hate this. So in case you're curious, I am the person that in high school and college, I was actually fast in algebra. But that fast meant that I almost always screwed up. So I am well aware of the fact that part of the reason I did so well in calculus is because we got partial credit. Because without that, I would not, I would not have survived. So this then becomes 5,000. Because I am the person that when asked, I would definitely wind up with one thing wrong in all of the algebra. So I should also say that part of the reason why I chose to do this problem this complicated is because this is more complicated than we would actually put on an exam. I should also say that. So since this is more complicated than we would actually put on an exam, I also felt a bit comfortable because this is, this is worse, frankly. But sometimes I feel like when you ask me to do a quadratic, that that's what you're asking me for. Because I expect that you guys did quadratics in high school and that you therefore have some backgrounds in these. So that's 2,000, that's 20,000X squared. So asking me to do a lot of algebra, part of what I assume you're asking me for is you want to see a lot of algebra done. So I just distributed the 5,000 across all of those on the left. So I got all of those. So now I need to get all of my Xs together. So that means I'm going to subtract 0.02 from both sides, which is going to get me my 49.98. Then I'm going to subtract 0.3X from both sides. So since this is also negative 0.3, that's 2,000.3X. And then I'm also going to subtract X squared, subtract X squared. So that's going to get me plus 19,999X squared. That's going to leave me with zero on that side. That now means that I have what I need for my quadratic equation. So that means I have a value of A of 19,999. I have a value of B of negative 2,000.3. And I have a value of C of 49.98. So now I can plug into X equals negative B plus or minus the square root of B squared minus 4AC, all over 2A. So now I have all of these numbers. So now the algebra continues. X is equal to positive 2,000.3 because a negative times a negative is a positive, plus or minus, plus or minus, the square root of B squared. So that's negative 2,000.3 minus 4 times 19,999 times C, 49.98. All divided by 2A, all divided by 2 times 19,999. Sorry, I'm also laughing because I did this to myself, right? And part of the reason why I didn't want to do this live was so that I could make myself a nicer problem. Did I wake up and make myself a nicer problem? No. This is possibly probably worse than what I would have come up with on the fly. Although at least it's something I can do, I guess. So negative 2,000.3 squared is 4.0012 times 10. Don't lose that. Times 10 to the positive 6, minus 4 times 19,999 times 49.98. I'm going to get 3.9982 times 10 to the positive 6, all divided by 2 times 19,000, which is 39,998. Looking at this math in here, you can at least see that the larger number, this will be positive under that square root symbol. So I still have 2,003 plus or minus the square root of, and this is the part where I am basically keeping some numbers in my calculator to make my life a little bit easier. But yes, I am still using a scientific calculator. I am not using a graphing calculator. So there's still such a large difference in those numbers that I get the square root of 2.99992 times 10 to the third. So I'm still getting the square root of about 3,000. So the square root, so now, so I will go ahead and take the square root of that number. So 2,000. I'm also doing this step by step in case you're curious because if I have messed up in my algebra, which I've already messed up, is entirely possible. You guys will be able to figure out where that happened. So someone is undoubtedly going to contact me and tell me I messed up in my algebra. And then I will be sad because I will not have additional time to fix it. Be real honest. I am teaching three other classes. So this is, this is the time I have to spend on chemistry. So I need to deal with this positive or negative sign up here. So I'm going to do the positive part first. I guess do the positive part in blue. So I'm going to take 2,000 plus the 54. So that gets me something like 2,055.07 divided by 39,998. If I do subtraction in here, we'll do the subtraction in red. I have 2,003 minus 54.77. That is 1,945.53, still divided by 39,998. Then from here, we are in fact doing division. I have been leaving it out, but this is always X equals. So since I already have one of these numbers in my calculator, I'm going to do the, I'm going to keep going with the one that's negative. So I get X equals 0.0486 on this side. And on the blue side, 2,055.07 divided by 39,998. I get X is equal to 0.0514. Really? So I mentioned that I made a mistake in my algebra earlier. Oh, no, this is going to work out just fine. This is going to work just fine. So my original like, really? Is because these numbers are so close together. But keep in mind, we're going to go back to the top of the page, back to the top of this problem and look at what I wanted. I wanted the constant, the equilibrium concentration of A. So, and this is going to be important because this is the one that has subtraction in it. So I'm going to plug in for the equilibrium concentration of A for both of these and I'll show you what happens. This is 0.1 minus 2X. So my concentration of A has to be equal to 0.1 minus 2X. If I do that with a If I do that with a number in blue, I do point one minus 2 times 0.0514. Um, that gives me 0.1 minus 0.1027. That gets me negative 0.0027 molar. This can't happen. This is impossible. This is not a chemistry thing. So this one is wrong. Um, that's, this is, this is, this is wrong. Uh, we can't have a negative malarity. So this is not the one that I want. Uh, I know that because when I plug it back into the ice table, so that's what this was, negative, plugging it back into the actual malarity. When I do that, I get a negative number for my malarity and that cannot happen. Then we could do the other one, 0.1 minus 2X, 0.1 minus 2 times 0.0486. And while we might get something that's small, it won't be negative. 0.0972. So then I get a positive 0.0028. Uh, and this is correct because now I have something that is actually positive. So. And that actually, that's the answer to the question because the question didn't want to know X. The question wanted to know what the concentration was of our reactant. So plugging back into the table is what I did. I'll scroll back up so you guys can see that ice table again. So it asked for the equilibrium concentration of A, so I plugged back in. So a couple of things. Um, one. Um, I made this problem longer and more complicated than what we would put on an exam. So that I could demonstrate solving for Q and figuring out which direction this ran in. I also did that, uh, and, and then it required the quadratic and this was also a messy quadratic. Having to foil both sides is a bit much. Um. One that would be more appropriate for an exam would be one where like for this reaction, like um, the A would actually be zero for an initial concentration. So like you would have point one molar for a C, you would have point two molar for D, but then A would be zero. You would start with zero. Um, and that would both make your algebra a bit easier. So all of this foiling steps that I did over here. All of this algebra that we did to just get to this point would go a lot faster. Um, if our initial things were different. But again, part of my assumption is that when people ask me to do a quadratic, they would like to see a lot of algebra. Um, so again, this one is not, this one is too complicated for an exam. Um, but again, hopefully this is helpful in taking a look at some of those algebra steps and taking things step by step. That was the last question from the uh, exam review. Um, so that's going to be the end of the video. Have a great day. Good luck.